Okay.
Like the open the meeting, the Falmouth Public Schools Falmouth School Committee for April 28th, 2020. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but can be viewed live on, and there's the Zoom, Channel 14, and YouTube. Those things are available for them. I'll also read, like getting things organized here. I remind everyone that the meeting is being telecast and recorded on Channel 14. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. John's in now as well. Thank you, John. Okay, let me do the mission, vision, and core values. Falmouth Public Schools' mission statement: The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue these goals through curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Vision: Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them. Core values: Empower students to find joy in their learning. Embrace each other's differences and cultivate community. Encourage a life of growth and wellness. The role of the school committee is threefold: To write policy. To approve the operating budget. To hire the superintendent and support her in carrying out her initiatives for the school district. We will go to public comment. And let me please read this. And we can be a little limited on time, but we do have basically a two- to three-minute time allotment, and I would like people to try to stay with that as much as possible. Please limit to two- to three-minute span per individual to items not on the agenda. However, we will accept concerns with regards to the virus, the extensions of school, and things that we generally sometimes do later in the meeting. We just want one area of public comment. There will be no debate or action-taking on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual may request an item to be placed on a future agenda. As someone takes the mic, please state your name. I think that would be appropriate, name and where you live, and that would be appropriate. And I think it would be nice to indicate the schools that your sons or daughters are involved with. Okay, so let's go to the next phase and update. So is there any public comment?
No, I just want to interject one thing that I'm happy to keep a two- to three-minute timer, just so that, just for reference point, not that I'm going to shut anybody off, just I think it's important for people to be heard.
Yeah, without question. Thank you very much.
How do we know, how do people let us know they want to talk? Because before they would just like wave at us, and now we can't see them all.
So they're, this Mike Falcone, they're raising their hands, so I have to let them in to speak once they raise their hand. Would you like me to announce who I'm letting in to speak before I do, or?
Can you also provide for people, some people might not know how to do whatever it is they have to do?
Okay.
Just buy for them so they know how to participate.
Anybody that's watching that wants to participate, if you move your mouse to the bottom of the screen with all the pictures, there'll be a little button that says Raise Hand. It will look like a hand. And once you click that, it will show us that you're raising your hand. The first person we have is Lori Andrade.
Hi, thank you, Mike. I am president of the Falmouth Educators Association, as well as Assistant Principality Falmouth Elementary School and the Elementary Literacy Manager for the district. And I understand, I can see that there's a new format. I do feel that as we're trying to proceed as typical as possible, that being able to see who the attendees are besides myself would be helpful. I find this format a little unsettling. And I'm sure the difference between, you know, perception and intent, I try to keep that in mind at all times. And so I will say, I don't know what the intent is. It would be nice to hear what the rationale is for the change in format. But I can tell you the perception from my point of view is that it doesn't seem to foster wanting to hear what everybody has to say and being able to see everyone that's here in the meeting. If we were present, we would be able to see everybody who is there. And I do think that that makes a difference in knowing who your audience is. So I do find that a little bit unsettling personally. I do look forward, if someone could address what the rationale is for that, I would welcome that. And if it's not to be discussed, or talked about, or addressed at this meeting, I would ask that it is put on the agenda for a future meeting. Thank you.
Does anybody want to comment on that? On the change of the format, so to speak? Are you requesting a comment, Bill?
Do you want to, are we going to do questions and answers, or are we just?
No, I, we put that on the agenda.
I think it's fair to say that it was part of an upgrade. I don't want anybody to think that we're not being forthcoming, or not being, or not being transparent in any way. I know that we don't normally answer things back, but I think that that's a completely fair and appropriate question, like why we could see people in weeks past, but now we can't. I listened on the select board meeting last night and sort of felt the same way. So I think that we should probably mention that this is an upgrade to prevent hacking. That was, although we were not hacked, we were advised that this was the right thing to do. And I really think that, can somebody help me out with this? Because I'm fumbling and.
No, I think you said it very clearly. I mean, it's.
Okay, like I agree with Lori 100%. I was on the select boards meeting last night, and I did find it very unsettling that you can't see people. I feel grateful that I'm able to, you know, look at the participants on my screen, but I know that not everybody can, and it was a little bit awkward last night. So I hear what you're saying, but please know that it is not sinister in any way. It's not to try and not allow people to see who's here. It was an upgrade. And I know that sounds crazy because it doesn't really seem like an upgrade, but that was the upgrade, and here we have it.
Yep, I agree.
You did a great, Melissa, Bill, I just wanted to see the attendees. Keep with her with us. I think we need to follow through on our process to see if he's recording.
It shows that it's.
It looks like, it looks like it's recording on the upper left-hand side there. I'm not sure if that's.
Well, Mike, I'm sorry, Ryan Weber is.
Ryan Weber's recording.
Recording it so that we have it, but I just meant the audio. We usually ask our media whether they're recording.
Oh.
Bill, I agree with the, with, I like it the other way too, where you can see everybody, but also the security aspect of it where we do have to, you know, that, you know, it is safer this way, but also I think if we could, as a kind of way to merge both worlds and have the benefit of that, but also the security, folks may need to, and I'm not, you know, the technical side of it, but, you know, they would may need to like let us know ahead of time that they would be, you know, looking to speak or whatnot, and then they could get an invite. So then we could also have the security, but then also have the individuals be able to participate in more of a kind of, we're all in this together type of.
We'd have to look into see if that was possible to do then, John.
Good enough. Thank you.
I do have a, I mean, I think that if you see at the bottom of your screen that there, it shows how many participants are there, and if you click on that, it shows who the attendees are, as well as the panelists. The attendees, it actually shows an attendee list.
Yeah, there's 33.
You may not, you may not see the actual faces, but you can see the listing of who's participating.
That's really helpful.
It doesn't show that to the attendees. It only shows it to the panelists.
Okay. That's how.
Lori's trying to get back in to talk. I think I cut her off a minute early.
Okay.
Let me unmute here. All right, Lori, you should be.
Mike, yep, thank you. So that was one point I was going to make is we don't see the same things that you see, for one. And, you know, secondly, and I believe Melissa Keefe captured it in a sense, is that the perception when you look at this is that it is not a public meeting, that is more of a private meeting. And although, again, I'm talking about perception, I think maybe even having it put in as information when you tried to get into the link, which was very difficult as a PDF, I struggled with it for about 20 to 25 minutes before I could actually figure out how to get in. You know, I just feel that there has been a partnership forged with the community and the ability to be able to see who is there, so you know who your audience is, is integral in this, you know, to be transparent, as transparent as we can. And so I'm, again, you know, if it's put on another agenda, that's fine, but I am just formally requesting that you go back to the same format that you had before. I will say, as far as an upgrade, you know, I mean, I'm a teacher. I get all the FAQs and all the security features and everything from Zoom, and everything that we have gotten has not been anything to the degree that is being implemented right here, and we're told that it's secure. So I would say if it's secure for us to be with students, then it's secure enough to be with adults. Thank you.
So I am going to add one thing to that. So for the, the teachers and the students, it is a private meeting invite. This is a public meeting invite, and we are still having the Zoom bombing in other districts, and people are moving to this because the, the attendees can't take over the screen sharing and can't, unless they're invited in, talk. And so this is what most people are moving to. Melissa mentioned the Board of Selectmen last night. I've moved to this feature as well. So the upgrade is really a security upgrade, and so that's the reason for the move. And that's the difference between our meetings are public, and so the Zoom invite and the Zoom meeting ID is public, but with our teachers and our students, it is a private invite. And that, those are the instructions that was offered to the teachers in order, how to make sure that their meetings stay private. So just wanted to share that piece.
And if anybody has the opportunity to speak to us tonight on comments, public comments, we obviously will take that into full consideration and listen. And I think we're always very respectful professionally when we listen to people. Lori, thanks for your input. Any other, any other public comments, please?
This is Heather Goldstone.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Goldstone. I know many of you on the school committee and at this meeting. And for those of you who know me and know that I'm a public speaker, I will tell you now, I'm reading comments that I have already sent to the committee, in part because this is the third school committee meeting that I have showed up to in a row, and I have left the other two too emotional to speak. I am the parent of three children in Falmouth Public Schools. I'm a member of three PTOs and one school council. I've worked with district administrators and many of you as part of projects, including East Falmouth Elementary Schools Outdoor Classroom and the Woods Hole Science Partnership. I'm also the daughter of a retired elementary school teacher and administrator. I know how much effort and love goes into educating our children, and I have spent countless of my own hours working to support and improve our school system. And so I am heartbroken to write and say this, but I am considering withdrawing my children from Falmouth Public Schools for the duration of the COVID-19 pandemic. I have been frustrated and disappointed by our district's response to the challenges of remote schooling and have yet seen no signs of change. I am hoping that I will see signs of change and hear signs of change in the presentations and discussions later this evening. To give you just a few examples of the dysfunction that we've experienced over the past six weeks, our students are encouraged to set a routine, but assignments come from multiple teachers through multiple channels and may be posted at any time of day, making planning nearly impossible. The work is required, but often the mechanism to support it doesn't function. Even in the best of cases, completing what would normally be a simple assignment often requires navigating three or more websites or apps. The result has been more stress than learning at a time when experts say our focus should be on mental health and socio-emotional growth. Weeks ago, I wrote to Superintendent Durr and the principals of the three schools where I currently have children enrolled, that's East Falmouth Elementary School, Morse Pond, and Lawrence School. I made it clear then and will reiterate now that nothing short of virtual classrooms with live instruction is acceptable. If the district requires students and caregivers to dedicate hours each day to schooling, expects the learning of new material, and insists on grading students' efforts even if only on a pass-fail basis, then teachers must teach. That means implementing a regular schedule of homeroom or advisory meetings, synchronous instruction and office hours, plus ample time and opportunity for offline work and play. I know that what I'm asking for is not easy, and that it may not be as good as what happens in Falmouth Public Schools classrooms. Neither of those is a valid argument for not trying. Indeed, what I'm requesting is precisely what the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is recommending in its latest guidance on remote learning. Massachusetts has two accredited public virtual academies that serve thousands of students each year, and many traditional schools around Massachusetts have rapidly implemented these types of steps. Let those schools be models for Falmouth. I've heard equity raised as a reason for shying away from virtual instruction and feel the need to call that out as the red herring that it is. Students in grades three through 12 have been given Chromebooks and are being required to use this digital technology for their learning. Online classes present no greater barrier to access than current online assignments. In fact, qualified teachers presenting material and assisting students with their work in real time is the most equitable approach to remote learning. What is not equitable or fair in any way is to put all responsibility for learning on students and caregivers currently facing a wide array of circumstances, all of them stressful. My own family enjoys every conceivable privilege. We are aware of this, and yet we find the demands of simultaneously working and schooling from home overwhelming. It must be infinitely harder for essential workers and frontline healthcare providers who can't be at home with their children. And I can only imagine how students and caregivers facing joblessness, food insecurity, domestic violence, or homelessness are faring. As I have voiced my concerns to teachers and administrators in recent weeks, I have repeatedly encountered the same response, that this is hard for everyone, and our educators and administrators are doing their best. I know that is true. Unfortunately, it is not enough. If the district cannot provide regular online instruction, they should assign each student a final grade based on the first three quarters of the year and release families to do whatever is best for them in this unprecedented situation. And they should use this time to plan and prepare for next year, because it is increasingly clear that we will not be doing school as usual, and we cannot continue to do school by triage. Thank you for allowing me to comment this evening, and I look forward to the discussions later in the meeting.
I thank you for your letter, and your comments, and your openness, and we will obviously look into this, and there obviously will be discussion with probably some of the things that we do tonight. Thank you. Anyone else on public comment?
I don't see any other hands up right now.
We have no one, Bill.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Let's go to update on school code, update on school closures, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I just want to share again that we know how hard this is for many families. We, it is, we understand that the, each home, it's very different. We get many different requests and compliments about how different teachers are addressing the work that our teachers are doing. And we are trying to be sensitive to the range of emotions. I know when the governor made the announcement that we were out for the rest of the school year, that this came with a range of emotions for many people. And we are sensitive to that. We are also having the same emotions. We, we miss our students. We miss seeing our staff, and we are, we're here to help you. We want to work with each family and try to be able to differentiate our approach and be able to support you in your needs. So we are saddened by this, that we will not see our students again before the end of the year to be able to say goodbye. And I know it's especially hard for our seniors, and we are heartbroken for that. And so, but we have to stay positive. We have to get through this. I liked what one of the high school students said, this is our job right now. We'll be known as that class that, you know, did our part during this COVID-19. And I couldn't say it any better than hearing that from a student, knowing that this is, this is what we have to do right now. We're going to continue to have some challenges, you know, as we work through this for the next eight and a half weeks now, nine weeks to the end. And we want to hear from you about how things are going. We've created a survey that's going to go out later in the week. Johnny, I don't know if you would like to, you've been working on that. Would you like to say anything about the survey?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. It's actually really great to see your faces. This survey is something that we're going to go over with the principals tomorrow and have them essentially give it a read-through and make sure we're asking questions that will net the kind of feedback that will help us improve what we're offering. The survey will give staff and family and faculty an opportunity to let us know what elements are actually working for you and why, so that we can understand, and also what's been a challenge and why, so that we can look to see how we can problem-solve it and identify essentially the caregiver and the level, elementary, middle, or high, that they represent. I think the feedback, which can be open-ended, will allow us to essentially get a really good read as to, you know, what's been a challenge and what's been actually working for them really well.
Thank you, Johnny. And we do, so we do want to hear from you. We appreciate the comments tonight. We have, we get many emails, you know, from parents, both at the school level, at the district level, and we want to hear from you. We hope the survey will be able to give you another venue to be able to share what's working, and we want to continue. You know, we have eight more weeks, so we want to be able to support families as much as possible. So that survey should be going out toward the end of this week. We are looking, continuing to look to try to get 100% participation with our students. So we ask our families to, if you haven't connected, if you haven't engaged in the learning, or if you need support in that, we not only have, you know, our teachers and our additional staff, we have VIPS volunteers that want to help students with their work. So we have some avenues to be able to help you and support you. So, so reach out to us, please. Contact your teachers or principals. Please contact any of my, my staff at the district office. We, we want to be able to support you and get our students engaged in the learning as much as possible. We're pleased we have more and more people coming on board, you know, every day. So, so that's good, and so we want to continue with that. Last meeting, I announced that we had the partnership with the Falmouth Education Foundation granted us funds to be able to support technology at the K to 2 level, so that everyone has access. We have ordered the devices. We are waiting for a delivery date. The demand is high across the country, supply low, but we were told that our supply would come in this week, and so we are just waiting for a delivery date. Our technology department has, has a quick turnaround and be able to get these out. So you should hear from us very soon on a pickup date, and if you need delivery, again, please let us know. We've been continuing delivery as needed, so we will get those out as soon as we can. This will give us our teachers more access to be able to support our youngest learners. So again, we're very pleased with that, and thank you to the Falmouth Education Foundation again for the grant, but also for, to the board members that want to come out and help pass out the devices. So we appreciate the volunteerism as well. We had donations for school supplies for families that may not have paper, pencil, crayons, markers, notebooks, whatever you might need. We have donations for that. We greatly appreciate that. We've already sent out a round of supplies for students. If anyone needs supplies at home to help through this, please let us know. Use the info@falmouth.k12.ma.us, or contact any of the principals or your teachers. Just let us know that you need that, and we will get supplies for you at home. Our food continues. We, even during last week, we continued with our food service. We will continue with the food service through the end of the year. Again, we've had, we've been holding steady with about 170 meals. 70 of those were actually delivering to homes. So please, if you can't pick up a meal, but you need a meal, please let us know. Again, use the same address or contact your principals anyway to let us know. But we will have breakfast and lunch for you if you need it. So again, we're going to continue that through the end of the school year. We're grateful to our, our lunch ladies and our bus drivers that are, you know, bagging them and delivering them, and, and so grateful for them for continuing the service. And so let, let us know if you need, need that service as well. We, graduation is a very emotional topic. We would love nothing else to be able to hold a regular graduation on graduation day on June 6th, but we know that that's not possible. So we have, we've gotten some feedback, and we've taken that feedback. And Principal Gans and Ryan Weber has put together a survey that went out yesterday, and I'd like to invite Principal Gans to come in and talk a little bit about the survey.
Mary, am I on?
Yes.
Oh, I am. I'm there. I see myself. Sorry. I was looking all around. It looked different before. Hi, everyone. As you know, I'm Mary Gans. So yes, obviously, as Dr. Dor said, graduation is an emotional thing, and I, you know, none of us ever expected to see our seniors facing such an unknown graduation at this time. So we did work very hard. As soon as Governor Baker announced that we would not be coming back for the rest of the school year, I sent an email to the seniors, and I sent an email to all families with an update about that, but asking parents and guardians of seniors to please let me know if they had any ideas about graduation, as we would obviously be having discussions about that moving forward. So I got a lot of feedback from seniors and their families, and essentially four ideas emerged from all of that feedback that we felt were potentially viable and safe, given the state and local guidelines that we have to abide by. So we put a survey out, what's today, Tuesday, yesterday? Oh, I also, yesterday, before we did the survey, I also wanted to meet with the senior class offices and class representatives and their faculty class advisors. So we had a Zoom meeting yesterday, and when I mentioned to those seniors, the.
And when I mentioned to those seniors, the four proposals or ideas that had emerged, they were in agreement and did not have any additional proposals that would have changed anything. So we put the survey out. And I give a lot of credit to the class offices and class reps. They also put it on their Class of 2020 Instagram page and summarized it very nicely, because it was a long survey. And I even said at the beginning of it, this is long, but it's very important. Please read through it carefully, because this is a big decision. So we actually already have had significant response rate, which is great. But the survey is open until Thursday at 4:00 PM. So we'll wait then to see what the final results are. Essentially, the four proposals are, the first one was a complete virtual ceremony where caps and gowns would be mailed to students. Students would take their own picture, send it to us. And we would be recording that in the context of other pieces of a virtual ceremony that would include some of the regular pomp and circumstance speeches that were pre-recorded and all of that. And that would be live streamed on the day of graduation at 10:30 in the morning. So it was 100% virtual. The second option that we thought was a safe option was to invite each senior with up to four family members to the field house on a certain scheduled 15-minute interval times and to have some live taping go on there where they are getting a diploma off a table, though all of the social distancing has to be abided by. But there would be filming going on. There could also be an individual cap toss going on. And all of those individual videos would be edited together by Ryan Weber and then incorporated again into a larger virtual ceremony. The, for all virtual ceremonies, the caps and gowns would be mailed out ahead of time. So the students would have them, they could decorate their caps, they could do what they want. That would take, that option would take between six and seven full days, be just in order to get, we have about 200 graduates, so in order to get all of them in, it would take significant time and filming, but we're willing to do it. If this is what the seniors want, we're willing to do it. The third option was seniors only in groups of up to 10, maybe five, but probably 10, come to the high school at scheduled times on the field outside and do a similar, another video of that, each of them socially distanced, but one by one, getting their diplomas, having a cap toss. And then again, incorporating that piece of the video for each senior into a larger virtual ceremony. The fourth proposal was a live graduation, but postponed indefinitely to some point in the summer when we knew it was safe to hold a large-scale live graduation ceremony. And what we explained and discussed was, I know other districts have selected a particular date, say in July, to have a ceremony. We just felt we were not in a position to set a particular date, plan for that, and then not be able to move forward for that. So, you know, guidance is changing every day, every week with this. We would wait until we felt that we had the correct clearance to move ahead with that. So as I said, the survey went out. A survey went to students and then the same survey, but a little different intro went to parents, obviously, because the first one was to seniors and one was, we wanted to see both responses. We wanted to see what the seniors wanted and we want to see what their families want. So we should have those results by Thursday at 4:00 PM. We will analyze them and then move forward.
Thank you, Mary, for explaining the options. So we, we, sorry, Melissa.
So speaking of graduation, maybe could we have a backup plan in the event that things are lifted? And maybe we can, so say, for instance, the seniors chose the virtual, like 100% virtual, but could we also have a backup plan in the event the governor lifts things? Just so that the, we're keeping our options open and we're keeping an open mind, moving forward, kind of thing?
So Melissa, yeah, so I think everybody would like to have something as normal as possible. So I think that was that fourth option that that Mary had talked about. If that's, if that's what people choose, we will do our best. My concern is, is that, you know, when we have, you know, 1,800 to 2,000 people in one room, I can't imagine, and I just want to be cautious to our families and and I don't want to get people's hopes up. I can't imagine that they would allow that that's going to happen anytime this summer. But if we modify that, go ahead.
I think that's what I'm thinking, like a modification. And then speaking of seniors, and this is a little off-topic of graduation, I'm thinking of their their senior funds. And I want to be crystal clear that I don't want to know, like, I'm not asking for anything other than seniors raise funds so that they can do fun things senior year. They don't get to do those fun things senior year. Has you know, taking care of seniors' caps, gowns, and yearbooks come up? Like, has that conversation started? Is that, what's your feel at the high school, Mary? Because I I'm trying to be cognizant of families that, you know, maybe otherwise they could no problem take care of a yearbook and a cap and a gown, but now that's going to be a hardship. And now here we have, I don't know, call it a couple thousand dollars that the seniors have raised for themselves. What's the vibe at the high school, Mary?
We actually have talked a lot about various options like that. And there's even, I have other money that could potentially be used to do that and not use the senior funds that they can use for something that's fun for themselves. And I do have another Zoom meeting with the senior class officers and class advisors and class reps this Friday to talk more about those things. We really, yesterday, just wanted to talk about graduation and what this survey would look like. So yes, we're discussing those things. One thing I forgot to mention, if I may, what we also put in the survey was, for the for the three virtual options, we said we would still, when the time is right and safe to do so, like to bring the senior class back together and have a celebration. It wouldn't be a graduation, but it would be a celebration. And so one of the questions in the survey was, if we were to have a virtual graduation, would you be willing to come back for a celebration in the future? So, because we would, we would like to see this, whether it's over Thanksgiving break or over winter break, or whatever it is, when we know that a large percentage of our seniors might be back in town, it would be nice to have a celebration for them if we can do that. And the class officers, it can be even run by the class officers at that time, using funds, and it can be a, like a mini reunion for them. Terry?
Terry.
Terry, can you unmute?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I was going to, at the end of the meeting, when you have, you know, future thoughts or whatever, ask if any, if there was any way we could do anything like they did at the Air Force Academy, where they had all the students on the field in chairs way far apart. I don't know if our new field is big enough to hold them, but I don't know if you consider that. I don't know, maybe the students could get dropped off and walk over there. I mean, we have the big field, I don't know. I'm just a thought.
So that could be one of the modifications we could consider to do the, to do a live ceremony, if that's the option they pick.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, again, just are, we would love to have a live event. You know, or, but we do have to follow, you know, the the governor's advisory, the Massachusetts Health Department advisory, our local health department advisory. And, you know, so we will, we we will look at the results and we'll, you know, review that. And we will try to do whatever we can and whatever modifications we can to any of the selections that they may may pick. You know, safety is always going to be first.
Mary, I think you did a great job of covering everything. I love the aspect that you're involving kids, because I think when you empower kids, they just do a fantastic job. So I think the survey and speaking to kids, you're going to find something that works for everybody very well.
I'm sorry.
You will. And the other thing is, Johnny, thank you for that survey. I think by getting to the principals and and starting that with with input for principals, teachers, obviously, I think the product can only get better. So thank you on that as well.
Kelly, what's your question?
Yes.
So, sorry, I'm going way back to the start of what you were presenting. But I just wanted to ask a question about the survey of our parents and and students about how everything is going and what we can do to try and make it even just a little bit easier. I just want to, I just wanted to know if we're having that survey available in Spanish or Portuguese, if that's going to be available, because I worry that the the families that may be the hardest to reach will not be responding. So do we have other ways to make sure it's available in in other languages? That if they don't, can they like call someone and do it over the phone? Or I just want to make sure we reach the families that are maybe struggling the most.
We do have the capacity to use our Google Suite to have it translated into different languages. So we're going to make sure that happens. And after we have a conversation with the feedback from the principals tomorrow, we'll come up with a plan to reach out if if we don't have a critical mass return the the survey, so we can get a good representation of, you know, you never get 100%, but we want a very solid representation, what we would call a critical mass, so we can get our finger on the pulse of how it's going for staff, faculty, and and the families.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Andrea?
Yeah, I had a very similar question about making sure that that survey was going out to vulnerable families and getting their feedback. So I appreciate that Kelly already brought that up. I guess, as as you guys were discussing it, a thought came to mind is that we are delivering those 170 meals a week. And I'm wondering even if a paper copy or something else could go with those, just to make sure that we're reaching people who might really be struggling.
It's a great idea, I'm writing it down.
That's a great point.
Melissa?
I just want to make sure that, I don't know what's on the survey, but I I hope something along the lines of, how do you feel about regular Zoom meetings? To check in with your, the classes and the teachers, just to have a little, something a little bit more streamlined. I know that personally, my children are doing, like, their teachers are doing a great job. And it's, I don't, I I guess I'm speaking for parents who have contacted me in saying that it's very difficult to have a plan for the day when there's no, like, you should have your assignment by 8:00 AM. And then you can, and I made that timeout, but do you follow what I'm saying? Like, if you have, if you know you're going to have all of your assignments from all of your teachers at one school by X time, then you can kind of make a plan for your day, as opposed to chronically coming back throughout the day and having it be disorganized. So I just, I hope that that sort of captured within the survey.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, I have a question, not related to the survey, but regarding school closure. Are we going to have an opportunity or let the parents know or guardians know of an opportunity to go to the schools and collect personal belongings that may be left there?
Thank you, Natalie. So we are trying to work out a plan, but as the timeline, you know, we, it's going to be in June, right? We hope, again, we have to figure out a safe way. And we, you know, are continuing to listen to the governor's updates. And, you know, the stay-at-home advisory was extended to May 18. So we want to continue to keep abreast of the the updates from the governor and just make sure that whatever we plan, but we have been talking about that since, you know, families were unable to to do that when we left. And of course, we didn't at that time think that we would be, you know, out until the end of the school year. But it's 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 on our agenda to schedule something. But when and how are the the two, I guess, variables that we've got to, we've got to plan on. But thank you for that. I have a few more updates. Just to go over, I wanted to also say that we ordered yard signs for all of our seniors. It was that the yard sign itself was actually designed by our seniors. And they are ordered, they should be in next week. So you're supposed to, I know, stay at home, that's the stay-at-home advisory. But if you have to be out for any reason and driving around, look for the signs. There'll be a yard sign in every senior's yard. And so we're happy to do that. So that was something we felt like we could do for them, so, to recognize our seniors. The budget forecast, Patrick's attending all the meetings. We do not have anything definite yet from the state. Patrick and I have been meeting with the town. As you know, our, the largest percentage of our budget is town, not state, it's a small percentage from the state. We are, and we are, continue to be very grateful to the town of Falmouth. They are good to us at this point. There is no need for us to be concerned for the rest of this school year. But FY '21, although it looks good, may be a different story. And FY '22, as we begin planning that this fall, will be very different. So we're very pleased that, you know, we we are going to be okay for the for this, the rest of the school year. That's not the case everywhere, and so we feel fortunate. But at the end of next school year, we may be, we may be looking at having to reorganize and looking at some reductions. I hope not, but I think it should be on everyone's mind that we are trying to be cautious and hopeful, but definitely cautious. But because of that, I know that during the budget season, I spoke about two positions that I was pretty excited about. And and we got a lot of great feedback from the community. And you as a school committee, the one was the elementary world language position. And the other was the Woods Hole Coordinator position that goes along with our Woods Hole new partnership. So we just do not believe that at this time, we should be moving forward with that, when especially when we don't know what the situation is going to look like at the end of next year. And we actually don't know what the next school year is going to look like either. And so to start something new and it to either be disrupted or may not be able to continue, we believe that this is not the right time to bring on this position. So as sad as it is, we do think that's the physically responsible decision. And so I just wanted to share share that with you. And we're looking at every every position and taking a very careful look, as we do every spring. But certainly, we're looking at this as, not only for the coming year, but what what the year after may look like. We know that that's usually when the hardship comes in any kind of recession is, you know, 18 months to two years after. So just want you to know that we are on top of that. And the other thing that I'd like to to just remind everyone, we're looking at kindergarten registration. I know that we were unable to do our second full week that we were planning, but we are taking registration online and we will make it as easy as possible for our community. So the, it's on the website, we have links on the social media. Ryan Weber is putting many reminders up, so you can direct, if you know, anyone that's going to be starting school in the fall, please direct them to the to the website or to contact any of the principals or any of us. We are happy to do whatever we can to to get our little kindergarten students registered for the fall. So just, you know, reach out and and find them and bring them to us, because we can't wait to see students in the fall. And that concludes my update. Thank you, Bill.
Melissa.
So a couple of questions, sorry, I feel like I'm speaking a lot tonight, sorry. How will the lawn signs get delivered to the seniors?
Safely. We we do, Principal Gans, sorry, Principal Gans has created a plan. We have got some volunteers, the the seniors know that they'll be coming. And so they are divided, and we are going to divide and conquer and deliver the, just like we would do the meals or whatever. So we leave things on the front porch step, but they will know that they are coming and they can put them out into the yard.
Okay. Okay, so that being said, I'm thinking about the personal belongings at the buildings, including perhaps artwork that students have worked on, not just, you know, like the snow suits and the snow pants and, you know, the things that you bring from home, but the things that the students have worked on throughout the year. I feel like we could probably do a better job and start thinking about that. You know, if we start rolling that out before June, maybe we would have, we would have plenty of time to do that safely as well.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I just feel like we don't need to wait till June to do this when the buildings are empty. You know, my daughter's ballet studio had a very easy sign up. Come get your recital costumes that sadly nobody's going to be able to wear, but it was very organized, it was very orderly, there was zero human contact, and it was well done. So, I feel like we can definitely get on that and maybe we don't have to wait till end of June. I think Juani mentioned, or perhaps it was Mary, that the seniors will come back and have a regroup, a celebration. I'm also thinking about that for the other students leaving schools. Selfishly, I'm thinking about my fourth grader who's been at his school for six years, two years of preschool, and then K through four. So, I feel like, you know, I feel like we're cheated, like a lot of people feel that way. And I think it's extraordinarily important for our social emotional needs for the students. You know, it was mentioned prior that we're supposed to be being mindful of our emotional well-being right now. And maybe we're focusing a little too much on other things. But I think, I was hopeful that maybe we would have a week or two at the end of school year. It's not going to happen, it's okay, but it's, yes, it's an important time for the seniors, but it's also an important time for the other students as well. Certainly not to diminish seniors, that's not a slam on seniors. This is just, all the students need it.
Thank you. Terry? Mute.
I'm sorry, I am a college graduate, I should be able to figure out these buttons. But when Laurie was talking about having to do away with the, you know, the position to be the liaison for the Woods Hole community, I kind of thought that was coming down the road because, you know, the money that we get from the town is going to be affected by the tourists. We don't have in so many things that would impact our budget. And with, I was thinking, until that reality sunk into me that we would probably have to make some cuts. I remember watching on the news in the year, let science rule our decisions, let science rule our decisions. And I thought, we're making a step forward. We already did with linking with the scientific community and anyway. So, that's especially sad to me. And it'll come to be someday though, so at least we were forward thinking about it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, and I couldn't think anymore. And it will be, we are continuing our communications. We've already had one liaison meeting since we, right before we were closed. We have our next liaison meeting with them tomorrow. We are continuing to be in touch, we will keep this partnership going through next year. And then, you know, when it's the right time, we will definitely move forward. This will not be forgotten.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on.
Lisa, Lisa has.
I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
I hate to kind of go backwards, but, you know, and I haven't spoken out much this year at all. I'm the newbie on school committee. But I think that, you know, in light of everything that's going on, I kind of wanted to go back to our first guest speaker, who really poured her heart out on how she's struggling with, with her kids and trying to, you know, hold on a job. And she's really frustrated that she feels that she's not, the teachers aren't teaching. And, you know, as a parent, you know, I'm obviously on school committee, but I'm also a parent, and I have two kids. And I'm home all day because I'm out of work as well. And I'm struggling because I'm not seeing consistency. Like I've heard across the board here that we're struggling with consistency on perhaps what certain teachers are offering the students versus East Falmouth, I think is doing a great job, but perhaps some other schools are not as consistent with the learning. And so, I was struggling with even my own kids trying to understand what their day is going to look like. And I think if we could try to get a little bit more on board with what that daily schedule is going to look like, so we can all wrap our head around it. And then a second thing I wanted to say is, I'm not necessarily opposed to scrapping the rest of the school year because I feel like the kids are not getting what they need to get. And will they get that for the rest of the year? So, again, I know I'm on school committee, but I'm a parent, and I'm struggling with this as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments? Megan?
All right, I'm sorry, I'm going to say something now too. I think we have to remember that this is, every child is an individual and every child learns different. And, you know, as a parent as well, as with a son on an IEP who has constant pullout services, it's been honestly really great from my end. He's had individual math instruction, he's had individual reading instruction. He's on Zooms three times a day, which isn't ideal, but it's working for him. So, I think we kind of have to remember that each kid kind of has a different background and different learning needs. And it's not consistent, and I don't think it can be consistent because every child learns different. So, there's no one size fits all for this. There's no, you know, this is the only way to do things. It's just not an ideal expectation at this point. But I just kind of wanted to throw it out there that I know people are frustrated, and I am too. I'm home because I'm out of work. My sons definitely spends more than three hours on his work a day. But I do see a really huge effort from all the teachers and the specialists to do the best that they can. And maybe teachers could be more consistent on that. But I don't think we're going to find a one-size-fits-all when it comes to this. And I know that's kind of disheartening, but it's tough. But I just wanted to put a little, my thoughts too, as being a parent and realizing that we're all coming from different places and it's not easy for anybody. But I just felt the need to kind of throw that in there as well.
Thank you, Megan, very much. Any other comments? Okay. There's none. Any other comments? We'll do presentation on continuity of learning plan, remote learning. I would imagine that would be Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Redder.
Thank you.
I'm going to share my screen and walk through and share a little bit about the journey that has led us through three iterations of guidance from the Department of Education and the coordination that we've made with our teachers, with our department heads, with our school and our district administration, and the number of hours and planning that we've been through. And the conversations that are coming up here tonight have been echoed throughout many of our planning sessions, including trying to be conscious of the impact, both of prescribing a schedule and suggesting one. And knowing that in some cases, we have, we're asking multiple students to get on at the same time and trying to think through that. So, I want to share, as we go through, unfortunately, I need our tech team to allow me to share my screen. I want to share some of how we came to what is our continuity of learning and the phases that we've been through, and then give a little bit of a preview of the planning that's continuing, including several meetings tomorrow and Thursday about preparing to release the next iteration. I'm still unable to share. Here we go. So, I'm bringing you first to the district's main page because I think it's the easiest way to look at accessing this. And while the continuity of learning is right here, I'm going to bring you into the district update page. There are a couple of features that are embedded here that are a combination of different resources. And then I'm going to bring you out to the continuity of learning. So, this is a second way that we can access that. Here, there is a resource that's been put together with a couple of articles just about sort of thinking through the process and the social emotional component that's embedded in making our decisions, as well as on this column, there's the letter from the commissioner to families guiding our work. So, here we have just some cautionary reminders about how to set our pace, which the starts though walks us through the first iteration, which was intended to be review of material that students were already familiar with as we were preparing to determine both how long we'd be out and then how to introduce new material. At the same time that we were creating continuity of student learning plans, we were creating continuity of professional learning plans. And there's much around building consistency and capacity in how we use technology, both from the perspective of some of our apps that have gone through very rapid updates with vendors who are trying to appeal to wider audiences. So, things looked differently when we were logging in, when we left school, to new program and opportunities like our learning management system that we're offering. Setting up a workplace was one way also to kind of help create spaces. And like we're talking about this evening, I too am a parent and working with both elementary and high school age children. Setting up that space looks very different for them and it continues to evolve. Creating a schedule, and a schedule in our case was devised by who needed the priority access to the internet to complete their work. And then from there, it picked up with a routine. So, this example is going to repeat itself on our continuity of learning plans and their suggestions that we've made. And they're an adaptation from what was shared with us by a board-certified behavioral analyst whom we follow and who has provided professional learning in the district. Working very hard to stay positive because these are unprecedented and uncertain times. And every day finds us on a new adventure. And working very hard to keep ourselves positive as we keep coming back to the drawing board as educators and trying to do what's next here, which is find balance in how much we offer, how we provide feedback, and the pacing and sequencing for our students. In each iteration of the commissioner's guidance changes that a little bit. Taking pauses needed, maintaining the open communication. And that's why I wanted to start here, sort of connecting through the COVID-19 response page out to continuity of learning, and then finally being supported. So, this is one resource that I wanted to make sure that we came back and connected with as we thought through our remote learning to talk about the continuity of learning site. When you enter the site, you enter a landing page that walks you through just sort of a general statement and with information that comes from our teacher leaders at elementary, our grade level leaders, our principals across the board, and then our department heads and curriculum council membership as we go through the grades, putting information in here that allows us to both talk about the information we're receiving from the Department of Education, but also to speak about it from a nuanced perspective of how we're managing teaching and learning in Falmouth. And then on this page are a couple of additional opportunities. These are open contests for students that are continuing beyond the April recess. And then towards the bottom of the page, and some of these are connected with our Woods Hole partners. I know we were just talking about some of those opportunities. But at the bottom of the page, there's also an opportunity to link back to Desi's remote learning guidance, first published on March 27th. And as we talked about, it's been through three publications or iterations. And then additional resources for students, for families and for students. And this links out to a number of additional platforms, especially platforms that are advantageous for learning in our earlier grades. Sorry, I'm trying to navigate slowly, so I don't give anybody feeling here of nausea by moving too fast. When you come into, this is the continuity of learning, this is the landing page we're on, there's then a separate informational page for each grade grouping. And again, this is where, through the administrative council comprised of principals and central office administrators, the adapted sample schedules are. And then it continues over here on the side through each grade level. For kindergarten, for pre-K, we receive a letter from Laney Cook Johnson, our director of early education. And it connects students to resources and it's updated periodically. For kindergarten one and two, we have been, by and large, releasing paper packets. And as we introduce the Chromebooks, we'll be able to more regularly use some of the online learning programming that our students had been becoming accustomed to as part of their learning routines in their classrooms. When we move up to grades three and four, they do have their Chromebooks. And in many cases, teachers are deploying information to students through Google Classroom. They are being introduced to Google Classroom, and not every student across those grade levels was using that. So, it's definitely a quick change in many cases for our teachers to build that capacity. And then there's reminders here and links out to other opportunities. At Morse Pond, and I'll just click on grade five as an example, it reminds students to check their Google Classroom regularly for announcements. As part of our transition through continuity of learning planning, we were able to open email access up for our Morse Pond students, which they previously didn't have, to also create an efficiency in the communication chain to students, which is why the learning plan no longer appears here in a list form because there's daily communication between students and their teachers. When we get to Lawrence, similar structure in how the departments are set up. So, I believe I mentioned earlier, but parallel to the continuity of student learning is our continuity of professional learning. And much of our professional learning, while it's not published to our site, is oriented around building capacity and understanding the pedagogy that's required for teaching online because we can't just simply substitute the work that we had previously been doing. In a virtual environment, it's not quite as simple as it sounds. And we also had to teach how to use Zoom and Google Meet. And then as you kind of come down the columns, sorry, I'm navigating back, you can see Falmouth High School in each of the departments. And then we also have some of our broader K-8, K-12 opportunities here and some pretty comprehensive opportunities that are being shared by our specialists. In going through this process, we are simultaneously learning and building capacity around the learning management system. And that learning management system, Schoology, is what's going to be able to allow us to really realize some of the broader goals that we have in mind for being able to work remotely. But it's, you know, taking time to build that and/or utilize all of the features of Google Suite. And being able to publish much of our work online and being able to navigate through both Google Suite and Schoology has also allowed us to use closed captioning, to use translation services. And then along the way, we're also working very hard to work with our English language development teachers to support sheltered English instruction across all contents. We're working with our special educators, our reading specialists, and, you know, all of our service providers to make sure that while service delivery can't look the same, we understand that as if it would if our students were with us, that we're doing the best with the capacity we have. And in small cases, it's small group interactions. And each time the Department of Education releases a new iteration of its guidance, it really allows us to build capacity and take another step forward. Having the unanticipated closing on the 13th and being able to release the first round of continuity of learning the following week, for us was really advantageous and it was a gift. I've also had the opportunity to work with my colleagues across the region through the Cape Cod Collaborative with our regular check-ins for Cape and Island curriculum directors. And we're sharing ideas and we're talking about where we all are. And I feel very fortunate to be in Falmouth and to know that we were able to launch our continuity of learning when we did. And that we've been able to grow and build, build upon each iteration with the next. So, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share the site and share some information with you. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to share the site and share some information with you. And I am happy to answer questions that you may have for me.
Thank you. Any questions? Sonya, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time, your effort. And it's a learning curve for everybody and it's going to take time. And I think it's, I'd love to see us back in classroom tomorrow. That's not going to happen. That's not feasible. So the progression that we're doing is on the right steps. And I think we're all learning and I think surveys, interaction with other districts is very positive. And it can only benefit our kids and slowly but surely it has to benefit our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move forward then. Presentation of Human Resources.
Okay.
I think we're putting you on the spot, Johnny.
I'm on the spot. Well, this is the busy time for human resources typically, where we're doing a lot of recruiting for our open positions. The closure has created a little bit of a shift. You know, there was a little bit of a shift that had to be done in terms of going to job fairs. And many of the job fairs have turned into either virtual job fairs or they have collected resumes and sent them on to individuals who were signed up. So one of the things I did for Falmouth in terms of representing us is that I attended a virtual job fair where we were able to view hundreds of applicants or hundreds of resumes and have an opportunity to have an exchange with them as well. They saw what open positions we had. They were able to send us resumes. They were able to ask questions. That was the diversity in ed virtual recruitment fair. That was April 15th. That was during the April break. And we were represented through the Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education. And so I have access to all those resumes. I've already followed up with them and pointed them in the direction of our open positions so that they can formally apply. It's sometimes you go to even virtual or in real life, you go to job fairs and it doesn't always translate into the step of applying formally and going through the process. So I wanted to make sure to follow up early and get them in our interview pool. We have some critical positions up that we want to be really thoughtful about hiring, especially with the closures and the impact of being closed from March 13th until we open up in September. And I've got to believe that we're opening up in September. That's a, that's a long stretch of time. And so we want to be really thoughtful about making sure that our reading specialist opening because of retirement is full, that we have strong special education teachers. That is always the case, but I have to say it's really critical to get experience, to get folks who also mirror the team that we already have. We've been talking about surveying and there were different people who have come on and talked about the challenges that they've had. And it's been extremely challenging, you know, thankfully I don't have small children still in the house. And I'm grateful for that because I think it would essentially, you know, like I'd jump out the window if I had to. However, I do think that folks are trying really hard, are climbing this mountain, are doing their best. And I always want to attract and bring on people who will make the team strong that also understand that pivoting and doing well for our students and for the community is important. And our teachers have done that. So that's the kind of teacher I'm trying to attract. It makes the conversations easier, especially when I start hearing from individuals who are applying for jobs on how they're handling the closure and their current position if they're looking to move. Because that says a lot about whether or not they're the right fit for us. It's not every teacher who will roll up the sleeves and muscle through the hard times like the teachers in Falmouth are doing. Nobody said it was easy, but nobody's quitting and everyone is sticking to it and trying to do their best. And that's what we're looking for. The other thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that we have pretty big and stylish shoes to fill with the principal of Mullen Hall exiting for her retirement. So that posting is up and hoping that she still stays involved with us in some capacity. But they are big and stylish shoes to fill. So we've got the posting up early and we will go forward in trying to fill those shoes. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Any questions for Johnny?
If you're wondering about interviews, principals have become pretty well versed in using Zoom. We already had an online onboarding process, if you remember. So the onboarding piece, save for a few tweaks that we have to make and Sharon's helping us with that in terms of getting queries done. We have a way to do it online to onboard our new teachers. So between the virtual interviews and going through that process and reference checks, nothing changes. The process isn't weakened by the fact that we are doing it remotely and we're doing it virtually.
Thank you, Johnny.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good thing.
We want to presentation of superintendent summative evaluation. Kelly.
So I need permission, I think, to share, to share my screen. See. Did it work?
Yes, it did.
Okay, great. Let's see if I can make it so that you can see just that. Okay. And everybody, I think hopefully has the, the packet handout as well. So let's see if I can, if I can get it open. Okay, so this is the overall cycle that starts with self-assessment and then through goal setting, implementation, the formative assessment that we do halfway through the year. And then we're at the end at the summative, which then starts the whole cycle all over again. And the evaluation subcommittee has talked a lot about moving the self-assessment into earlier in in the year so that we get a full year or moving the summative later in the year. But basically the process is that the school committee members for the summative is that the school committee members prepare their end of cycle evaluation report, which is an assessment on goals and the superintendent's performance on each of the standards. And then an overall rating of the superintendent's performance. Just like Bill says at the start of every meeting, this is one of our three obligations as school committee members. And then the school committee chair or a designee, in our case, it's the evaluation subcommittee, puts together the summative evaluation report, which takes all of the individual evaluations and compiles them all into one document. And that culminates tonight in the presentation of that document and then voting on that as the final end of cycle summative evaluation. And that's where we are today. So just for the public, the committee already knows this well, that proficient is the expected level of performance. It's fully satisfactory, demanding, but attainable. And then exemplary is reserved for performance that's such a high level that it could be a model for other, other school committee or other school leaders. Needs improvement and unsatisfactory, we of course do not have to worry about. We don't have a single one of those on our evaluations, thankfully. So the standards are broken down into categories. The first one is instructional leadership, which covers curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, data informed decisions and student learning. And for, for that first standard, Dr. Dorr's rating, when you compile all of the evaluations together was a score of proficient. Standard two is on management and operations, which includes environment, human resource management, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, policy and fiscal systems. And again, a ranking of proficient. The third standard is on family and community engagement, which includes engaging with the community, obviously. Sharing responsibilities, communication and handling family concerns. And for that, Dr. Dorr's rating was exemplary. It's rated as a model of performance that should be used as an example for other school leaders. And then rating, the standard four is on professional culture, which includes commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision and managing conflict. Another ranking of proficient. And then the last section that the school committee evaluates on are the goals that are set at the start of the school year, both by Dr. Dorr and then in consultation with the evaluation subcommittee and the rest of the school committee. And those were identified. The first one is the professional practice goal, which is on the new superintendent induction program, a multi-year program that all new superintendents participate in. And Dr. Dorr's ranking for that was that she met that goal. Goal two is on student learning, which includes continued, oh, there's a typo. Continued focus on access and equity and opportunities. That was the goal for this year. Dr. Dorr met that goal. Goal three is on the district improvement goal, which this year was on the homework policy review, which did get cut short. The final pieces were set for this during the school closure. But regardless, Dr. Dorr met that goal. And then the last, there's three categories, professional practice, student learning and district improvement. But district improvement this year had two separate pieces. And the second piece was on the framework for student success, implementing that and also a ranking of met. So I mean, the takeaways are that overall it was a very, a very good evaluation. There were wonderful comments written throughout. And although it doesn't, you know, not exemplaries across the board, one would never expect to see exemplaries across the board. So congratulations to Dr. Dorr because the overall ranking is a goal of ranking of proficient overall. And that's taking in all of the, all of the categories, all the standards and all the goals. And that's it. I don't know how I get back out. Okay. And I apologize that I don't know how to unshare. How do I unshare? There we go. And Bill, I guess I'll turn it back to you. Typically, we, because people ranked and rated things in a certain way based on certain pieces of information. And I don't know if we have, if time allows, but we usually have people read sections of their evaluation if we have time.
Yes, I think we should ask questions or pull out certain things from what we wrote, what we thought about in the evaluation processes. Anyone, I'll get that right. Anyone want to begin that, please?
I'm still unmuted, so I can go first if you like. One of the things that I just wanted to highlight was on student learning. And I'm just going to read right from it because I think that's the most fair thing to do. So I wrote that most worthy of mentioning under instructional leadership is the dramatic gains in student learning that were reported this year. Falmouth MCAS scores reported a 17% increase among high need students, a 25% increase for economically disadvantaged students and a 33% increase for students with disabilities. But it was not only subgroups with unbelievably high scores. Overall, the district increased by 12%. Such high increases are remarkable and deserving of praise. And also worthy of note is the incredible leadership provided during the coronavirus closure. Dr. Dorr is led with compassion and high expectations as she's encouraged teachers and administrators to rethink and retool to address curriculum instruction and assessment during this time of remote learning. I just wanted to highlight the, this, the MCAS scores because it doesn't really get reflected anywhere else. There used to be a whole separate category where we could discuss student learning. And those scores are just, they're unbelievable. And I know we talked about them a lot when they came out, but I wanted to talk about them again in the evaluation because I think it's the greatest measure of our, of our success is how, well, one of the many, how our kids are doing.
Terry.
You're muted again. You're still muted.
Now you're good.
Okay. So I have to stretch my screen a little bit here because I'm reading from my iPad. So I will talk about the student learning goal to which I wrote these comments. Lori has achieved exemplary progress on her student learning goal. Her philosophy of every student, every day is evidenced in the work she has done in Mary in many areas, including establishing a partnership with the Woods Hole community, offering Portuguese to elementary school students. And also throughout this, she told us to never forget that we have to continue to think about the wraparound services for students who have social emotional needs or English language learners. In addition to leading the district in everyday questions with success, Lori has moved our district ahead as she has led us to develop a new mission, vision and goal statement. To me, this is an exemplary practice. I'm not sure where to mention the concept of restorative justice in this document. Our district has begun implementing this new concept. It is prudent to try this new concept and to examine its effectiveness. It is important to mention the impact of coronavirus this year on the Falmouth Public Schools. We are lucky to have a superintendent who has done a phenomenal job in communicating and responding to parents, to staff and to the community in a very calm and thoughtful manner. She dealt with the safety issues first, then began the process to maintain curriculum as meaningful as possible. And she's also been forward thinking about the seniors and graduation. I thought of a way to sum up, a lot of things for me was that I think Lori is very forward thinking. Besides, she runs the daily routine of the schools, but her forward thinking has impressed me always. The four examples of this, I think, are implementing the STEM partnership with Woods Hole, which we're putting aside for now, we know, but it was implemented and we did sign an MOU. The other thing is maker spaces and thinking about the nature of classroom changes, the physical changes in classrooms. She sent people to a digital convergence conference, which is also forward thinking. And I believe this year that the success plans are being revamped to cover a three-year period with yearly benchmarks instead of just being annual reports. Another forward thinking step on Lori's part. So that's my two cents or five cents, whatever it was.
Thank you, Taryn. Andrea.
I thought I better raise my hand because I've been noticing a lot of similarities. We don't see each other's comments until we get this all compiled together. And I saw a lot of things I was going to say start to disappear, so I'll skip over those. But I did want to, I had written that Dr. Dorr is a true champion of Falmouth Public Schools students and staff. Promotion of success in athletics and the arts is a regular practice. Not many leaders take the time to celebrate success before moving on to improvement. So this is a real strength. And I also thought that family engagement is an area where Dr. Dorr's leadership style truly shines. Because there's a difference between communication and actual engagement. Dr. Dorr communicates with families on a regular basis, but also provides opportunities for families to get involved with decision-making in the district. Feedback is always encouraged. Focus on access, equity and opportunity are not just boxes to tick for Dr. Dorr. These issues are part of every discussion and decision. Dr. Dorr brings the every student, every day motto off the page into life by making equity a cornerstone of the Falmouth Public Schools culture. There's no doubt that she cares about every student in our district and wants them to succeed. And I also wanted to address something about our current situation because on a dime, our district was asked to make a drastic shift, try and educate and support students remotely. Dr. Dorr and her team have Dr. Dorr and her team have made adjustments to continue to serve students in a rapidly changing environment. Throughout this situation, Dr. Dorr has communicated in a clear, calm, and most importantly compassionate manner. Hundreds of details are still needing to be addressed, but Dr. Dorr has prioritized helping vulnerable students and continues to do whatever she can to help support students, staff, and the community. And thank you for all that.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else? I will do a quick read. It may take a while. Management and operations, family and community engagements. I kind of stressed that because I thought it was so, so, so critical for what you do. I think you do an outstanding job there. Superintendent has preference the relationship with this Falmouth School District and the communication of the community. Superintendent is always open to dialogue, whether it is positive or negative. Recently, with the coronavirus, the superintendent's leadership ability has accelerated. The almost daily demonstration to articulate in writing to staff and community have been highly professional and exceptional. And I without question believe that that intake with the community, with the teachers, with the staff, with the school committee, with everybody involved, I just think that's, that's special. We can read it, we get updates, and I think we feel good about where we're going. Falmouth School District will continue to deal with the virus and educational challenges, which we are, and will, and will be dependent on the positive leadership of the superintendent. Community engagement has been exceptional. The articulation, collaboration, correspondence with Woods Hole scientific community was groundbreaking. It will enhance our students to explore expansive the best, and I love that. I just love what you did there. And yes, that's going to be on hold, but the reality of it is it's pushed forward. There's, there's an idea, there's a vision, and I think the vision's going to be met within time. Homework task force, another thing that's kind of been put on hold. What I liked about that was it was also supported by community stakeholders. Another aspect of the involvement of the superintendent, superintendent and her initial impact, and this is important because Kelly and I know the duration of this. You know the duration of this. Patrick Murphy knows the duration of this. Sonya knows the duration of this. Joanie knows the duration of this, was the collective bargaining agreement. Because of your professionalism within negotiations or performance, enhance the group's ability to complete a difficult, long-term process. And it was a long-term process, it was difficult, and it's give and take in negotiations. And I think your leadership was greatly appreciated in that whole concept. And I really, really look for you and said, that was just a great job. Excellent. And again, that comes back to the ability to multitask and collaborate with all parties involved has and is exceptional. Superintendent has been very instrumental in the review, research, and revising, obviously, the mission, the vision, our core goals. And I appreciate your efforts in that because it got us together. We had some great, great workshops, a lot of articulation, a lot of ideas. And you, you gave us an opportunity to enhance those things, and I thank you for that. Great job. Anyone else? John.
Yes, I just have a statement and I'm going to tread lightly on one dynamic of it that I want to share.
I have, John, I think, I just want to make sure that it is clear that, you know, the process is set up such that there are no surprises, no new information is presented as part of this discussion. And I don't, I just don't think.
Kelly, I'm not trying to undermine what you're presenting, and I have every intention, and I do have the floor. And I have every intention of if, even though it's listed as discussion, to vote in favor of it and move forward with that, with that said. But I did want to share that it's a long interview. That the goals of something might be one thing and the perception of it might be another. And I do have to say that I did share with our leadership that I felt that this time this could be something that could be tabled as other districts are doing because it does have a sense of misplaced priorities, especially when you tie into the fact that other folks are sitting at home and considering, you know, possible reductions in their positions. With that said, I have a screen full of individuals that are very dedicated and passionate that I'm looking at about impacting the district. And Chairman Reither had asked me, so I had not participated in doing the evaluation before the April 1st deadline. And I'm okay with the fact that mine is not included in that. And I'm just sharing with, with Dr. Dorr, as I had already done so with her and with Chairman Reither and with Vice Chairman Welch as well. Chairman Reiter asked me to do an evaluation, so everyone would have an evaluation submitted. And I did so. It was not going to be part of the evaluation. But I did want to share, Dr. Dorr, that you're doing a tremendous job and that your, your vision that you had well in advance of any kind of issue to distribute Chromebooks to everyone, I think was brilliant and has been critical to the success in giving the parents, the teachers, the students, everyone in our IT group an absolute link up around that. Share that because, and I just wanted to explain as to why my evaluation wasn't in tune with that because I felt that it should have been tabled. And we, I didn't want to distract anyone with doing anything else other than I felt it was, you know, when a pilot might be fighting both engines being lost and then going into the cockpit and saying, hey, I want to tell you how you're doing. I just want to stay out of your way and let you do your job. But I appreciate that and I will if we, even though it's discussion, if they do motion to vote for it, I am full vote and approve the document that you guys have. Thank you.
Any other comments? Kelly, anything else on this?
No, I think, you know, Dr. Dorr's got all of the evaluations, so she had a chance to review them. And I think the compilation reflects how strongly everybody feels she's doing a wonderful job and we're really grateful, especially now, to have her leading us. So would you like me to make the motion?
Please.
So I would make a motion that we accept the summative evaluation as presented.
Is there a second? Terry. Terry. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye. Now we have to, I think we have to do a roll call.
That's my fault on that one. Melissa.
Melissa, aye.
Terry Madares.
Terry Madares, yes.
John.
John Finaria, aye.
Andrea.
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Megan.
Megan Fleck, yes.
Natalie.
Natalie Kinnellopoulos, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Kelly.
Kelly Welch, yes.
Bill Reiter, yes. I would express my thanks and the work and the effort that was put into this by the evaluation committee. You did a great job. I think it's just exceptionally, you followed the process. We had time to do it. I think a lot of people did a great job. And I appreciate everybody's efforts and everybody's thought process tonight and everybody's dialogue tonight. Thank you.
Bill, I would just also like to thank the school committee. I am overwhelmed and humbled by all of your comments and the evaluation. And I thank you very much, and I thank you for being such a supportive committee. And I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. I love being a superintendent of Falmouth. Thank you very much. And thank you for my great team that helps, helps me shine because you guys are great. Thank you.
Yes, it is collaborative effort, and you've been very big on collaboration when you walked into the door. And we appreciate that immensely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, we'll move on. Discussion on health policies from section A, B, C, E, I, and J. Any discussion? Sonya.
I would be happy to answer questions or respond to points in the discussion. Thank you.
Kelly, go ahead. A couple of questions, and I'm just wondering if there were any edits or changes or if you even met. Did you get this even to policy, even me?
We did meet. So now I'm trying to go backwards because I tore my school committee packet apart. In the packet, I believe.
I think my question was just around the school committee and technology.
Yes, the, the paragraph, the paragraph that you're referring to, it's policy BHE. I'm just trying to get there. So we said that, we did, we did go through and revise it, in particular, trying to match what we understood to be the intent in the last paragraph around the designation of what would effectively be a communications liaison. We made a suggested revision and we sent it to Jim Hardy, who's our field officer. And I am awaiting his feedback back to us. But we were trying to rework that a little bit to align to our current practice and make sure that we understood the original intent behind masks monolanguage. So I've sent a couple of correspondences, I can certainly send another. But that was one of the things that we did as part of the policy subcommittee, the day's blend was last week, last Wednesday. But that was the revision effort in which we engaged. If anybody else would like to share more around our conversation.
And I guess just for everyone else, because I had only sent my comment to, I think I only sent it to Terry, but I'm sure I made it to policy, was that the, the school committee and technology policy has a line in it that says that school committee members are supposed to CC a, I think it says a staff person, I don't remember exactly, but that somebody, that we have to CC a staff person on all inter-school committee communication, and that that person has to then print it all out and put it in the file or whatever. And I, I don't think that's how we do it. So I just want to make sure that, that that was what my question was.
Terry, go ahead.
We kind of thought we had it done, not digitally, that it can be accessed. And Sonya is referring to us getting the legal slant on it from Jim. So we did address what you asked, and we think we have the digital answer to the question so that somebody won't have to do a notebook or a binder of anything like that. So, but we're just, it sends it's a legal question, we're waiting for a legally answer.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So that's by updating practice, because our emails all have the tag on the bottom that they're subject to public record. That's what we thought covered us by way of archiving and retrieving.
Okay.
Yours is printing for the paper record.
Right, because they don't go anywhere. That makes sense.
Anyone else? Okay, so that's discussion. We don't have to act on that, correct? Because we're. Jim Hardy. Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. Any other things on that? Any, any, any other comments on those health policies? Okay. We'll move into first read on policies for section KL and wellness. Any comments on that, please? From the committee, Terry, please. Thank you.
Kelly keeps us in business, guys, so thanks again, Kel. She sent some questions. A couple of them were just edits that we missed, like we don't say chairman, we say chair. That's our standard thing. And the other one was in, oh, that would be in KDD. And in KLG, which is, the first line says safety of students, and she thought we should add staff. And we have added staff and other policies, so those are just no brainers to fix. Okay? Do you have that thing I CC'd you, Sonya? Okay. Then there's two that maybe need some discussion. One of them is policy KF. And Kelly was wondering if we should add something about health or physical activities for a reason for using the fields. I thought since it said facilities in the second paragraph of that policy, that that covered it. But that's just my opinion.
KF, there it is. Okay. Anything else, Kelly?
There was. I know. And I had one other question I just sent on to Terry about KFR and just, and mostly just curiosity about, it was about use of the buildings, whether or not the community school is included in there because they use buildings a lot. I just want to make sure we don't accidentally leave somebody out.
And my opinion was that that's included in definition number four. Can you see that, Kel?
Oh, I don't have it open in front of me. Hold on a second. And it very well might be, I just, you know, I just want to make sure we're, since we're going through all of it, you know, I don't want to miss anything. So you think as a school-related group?
That's my opinion, but I don't know. Does it go back to the committee again to agree upon? Or? I'm not sure. Are you happy with those answers, Kel?
I mean, if the, I don't have the right answer, that's for sure. You guys are knee-deep in policy, you would know better than me, for sure. But if, I'm sure you guys will meet again and if. Share a little bit about the community school, please.
First read, since it's a first read, we have an opportunity to look after everything again, come back and ask questions next time, and then go into the approval, correct?
Correct, yeah. There's a couple more steps, but I think Patrick can answer Kelly's question.
Yeah. The community school is a program of the schools.
Oh, that answers the question then, yep. That would be covered. Thanks.
And sorry, I lost Wi-Fi for a moment, so if I missed a question, I apologize. Hopefully I didn't freeze in any weird.
You were fine.
Any other questions on the first read? Okay, we'll continue with that next, next meeting then. And again, thank you. Thank, thank you, Kelly, for your questions and you're looking at that. And obviously, the policy committee for doing something that's fantastic. You're just doing a great job. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Conduct a routine business, approval of minutes, April 14th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I motion approve them. Now it's John, motion approve.
Yes, thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? No discussion? Let's vote on this. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, sorry, sorry, sorry. Roll call, I'm sorry. Melissa.
Melissa, aye.
Terry.
Terry, aye.
John.
John Finaria, aye.
Andrea.
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Megan. Megan.
Megan Fleck, yes.
Natalie.
Natalie Kinnellopoulos, yes.
Lisa.
Lisa Hart, yes.
Kelly.
Kelly Welch, yes.
And Bill Reiter, yes. It has passed. Thank you. Any, any member reports? Any requests on follow-up information? Natalie.
Hi, I would just like to follow up, circling back to the conversation related to schools and what the continuity of learning looks like at each school. So if we. So if we could find out from each school, just an overview, how many kids are logging on? What work looks like? You know, is one school doing three hours, another school doing only a few minutes? If we could just have a presentation, and I think that also goes along with the surveys that you're asking for, we could have a presentation about what this looks like at each school, just to sort of address some of those concerns, that would be great.
I think it would be too. I think you're looking at consistency across the board.
Exactly.
Thank you. I think we can, I think, Laurie, we could do that, and I think that would be great. Again, input from the staff, input from the principals. I always think that's excellent for the community. Any other follow-up? I kind of have a follow-up. I don't know if it's follow-up or future. I think the.
I think Terry had a follow-up question. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. Terry, did I miss you?
Yes.
I apologize.
Including what Natalie was talking about, I think a lot of people had questions about a schedule. Like, are teachers going to give their homework assignments a certain time every day? I think I heard Lisa, and I know some other people around the community are wondering about what time a day or what time per week are they going to get assignments?
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, my concern, and again, I'm not sure if it's under follow-up information or future. I guess it's kind of both, would be the look at summer school. And I think the important concept of summer school is the evaluation of the performance, or I guess the progress our special needs and IEP kids have made or not made. And if they don't make that in the next X amount, eight weeks, do we have programs for them in the summer that could work out? And if possible, maybe some one-on-one to give those kids the support they so desperately need? Because I realize in today's world, it is difficult as hell to to get everybody involved and to meet the needs of all IEPs. So I'm concerned about those kids. And I would obviously, obviously, look at summer school's multitude of ways we could work with kids from an enhancement of what they missed educationally, or where their deficiencies are, and especially in the IEP kids. I don't know if that makes sense, but I think those, some of those individuals that are behind and need that special attention. And obviously, it is a federal law. We need to adhere to that and do everything we can to help and support those kids. And I'm looking at maybe a summer school as an enhancement for some of those individuals.
So, Bill, we are in the process of planning summer school. We have been the last couple of weeks. We should, at the next school committee meeting, be able to give some more details about summer school.
Excellent. I appreciate that very much. Any other future items? Melissa?
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm glad that you brought up the summer school, not about the summer school, but I was sort of thinking of how we were going to have a collection for Chromebooks by the end of the school year. And that being said, I was sort of thinking we should have a plan to collect them or not. If, you know, we're thinking of keeping in touch with our students throughout the summer, how do we keep connecting with them? How do we make them feel like we're still thinking of them, that we care? That we are interested in, even if they are following, even if they're doing everything that they're supposed to be doing, and they're not following through the cracks, falling through the cracks with their schoolwork, perhaps it's a thought to not have them turn them in, unless, of course, they're leaving the district, and that's a different story. But to have them keep them, that we continue to check in with them once a week. What, I don't know what that looks like. But originally, my thought was we should have a plan to collect them. But now I'm thinking, maybe not. I think that we definitely have plenty of room to improve here. But nobody, there is no guidance on this. There is no, nobody knows what they're doing. Nobody goes to school for education for the pandemic that's coming down, or it just doesn't happen. So I think that that will segue me into asking for, maybe we need to have a future meeting, an open meeting, to just discuss how the community feels that we're doing. So that we can hear from parents. Parents want to be heard. We're getting piecemeal. We have a parent that went, poured her heart out to us and spent a lot of time putting that statement together. We have parents that I'm sure are feeling the same, and maybe didn't feel like they could write a letter or speak publicly, or I think that, I think that we owe it to our community to have some sort of open meeting to hear what people are saying. And I know that we have a survey going out, but if this were during a regular time that we could sit and speak with each other, this would be a school committee meeting at the high school. We're going to be here for the duration kind of thing. And I really think that that should be looked at. And I know that maybe that's not a popular opinion, but I really, I really think that we should listen to parents and hear what they have to say. And it's not just about sending surveys out, and that's great. And I want to get that data as well, and I want to look at it. But in past practice, that's what we would have done. And maybe we should consider that.
Thank you.
Have it be its own meeting, so that parents can speak and not have to worry about two minutes, and we don't respond back, and then they just feel like, well, I said that, and now what? That also being said, I know that our new Zoom meeting is an upgrade, but it feels really awkward for people. And we should probably think about doing something about that as well. So.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm still struggling, just like other parents. Nothing has changed in the last two weeks from my last closing statement, that it's hard. We're trying. I'm not doing it gracefully. So don't, please don't feel like parents can't reach out to us individually. Parent, you know, if you've got a killer way that you're doing it that works for your family, I want to hear it. And if you're struggling, I want to hear that too. So I really hope that this is, I hope the people are listening, and I hope that they are hearing us, that we want to hear from them.
Thank you for your comments. I kind of leave with Heather Goldstone's letter. I hope that in what we covered after we, she read her letter, we all had a time to think about it and look at it. I read it a couple of times. I think we all did. Is that I hope that we helped her tonight, that she's not the only one that's struggling. It's a challenge for everybody. It's a learning process for everyone. And I just think we're moving forward. I realize that there are some districts that looked at it, and I know Lisa made a comment tonight about looking at districts and saying, some people just want it shut down. And I don't, because I think learning is so valuable for kids. And yes, it's not easy to get 100%. We're trying to do that. I think 100% is impossible. But as long as we keep looking, trying to improve, and have professionals involved, educators, administrators, teachers, we have to move forward, and I think we're doing that. We're doing a lot of right steps. So I hope, I hope for Heather, we gave her a little bit of hope tonight, a little bit of promise tonight. It's not perfect, but I think there's a lot of attempts being made. Any other comments? I'll leave you with a quote. Quote, "Upon the subject of education, I can only say that I view it as the most important subject which we as people may be engaged with." Abraham Lincoln. Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second. Roll call. I'm going to get this right this time. Melissa?
Melissa, yes.
Terry?
Yes.
John?
I see a, I'm sorry, I know we're in the middle of roll call, but I see a parent's hand is up. I don't know how you want to handle that. Sorry.
If it's a parent, who's the parent, please? I mean, I can, I can pump the brakes on this, if it's, if it's a parent.
I feel like we should listen.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to put the parent in. It's Patricia Pinto de Silva.
Yes. Patricia, go ahead, please.
Patricia, your microphone's muted.
Hi there. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Sorry, I had assumed there was going to be more opportunity for comment. The one thing I wanted to ask was related to Sonya's comment about guidance coming from the DEES on continued learning. And I know some new guidance came out, was it yesterday? And I don't think that she referred to it, but I wanted to point you in that direction, because it really underscores a lot of the comments that were embedded in Heather's letter that she submitted around, you know, prioritizing meaningful connections with educators and peers, and making sure that live learning opportunities exist. And I just am wondering, why wouldn't we be focusing on that and have that presented today at the school council meeting? School committee meeting?
Andrea? Okay. Sonya, anything at all?
Sure. So, thank you, and thank you, Patricia. That's the third iteration. It came out, it was published very late on Friday night. And so we had an initial planning meeting today. There are grade-level leader planning meetings and curriculum council planning meetings, both scheduled for Thursday, which are all of our curriculum leaders. It's a considerable amount of guidance when you look at it in the perspective of the power standards. And so that's what we're trying to realign. This third, this is the third iteration of guidance from DESI, and that's exactly what we're trying to align our work around as we move forward. So I want to thank you for pointing it out. And we have been reading it and annotating it, and it's now moving through our planning, and we'll be in the next round of resources and learning opportunities that we are able to share.
Thank you. I hope that from this guidance, you develop a set of metrics that you'll be tracking that could help the school committee keep, you know, sort of abreast of how we're doing as a district from a sort of empirical and transparent way. I really agree with Melissa's comments about having a meeting that focuses solely on this subject. I feel like this is getting wedged in between different agenda items that are really not critical for parents right now. And I, and I just want to underscore the need to publicize these meetings better. They were publicized on Facebook, not on Instagram. They're not on the COVID page, from what I understand, or from what I remember. They're not on the Falmouth Public Schools site. They're not on the school committee page. And this has been an issue for school council meetings that I'm involved in. For this meeting, we really do need to be transparent and communicate, communicate, communicate. Thank you for your time today.
And thank you. Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate that. And we're trying to look at this every week, every two weeks, as to adding something in reference to the virus, the education, the commitments, and things of that nature, and updates. So, but again, thank you. Back to roll call. We'll start again. We have a, we have a motion, we have a second. We'll do a roll call to adjourn. Melissa?
Melissa, aye.
Terry?
Terry, aye.
John?
John Fenari, aye.
Andrea?
Andrea Thurl, yes.
Melissa, yeah, Megan?
Megan, aye.
Natalie?
Natalie, aye.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, aye.
Kelly?
Kelly Welch, yes.
And Bill, yes. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.